Welcome to the Anacortes Planning Commission meeting for October 22nd. Please, Jennifer, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name. Ms. Watson, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Mills.
Present.
Commissioner McCombs. Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Stoneman.
Here.
Commissioner Dretzky. Commissioner Carrier.
Under protest, I would like to move that the three absent commissioners be excused.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to...
Under protest.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse the three absent commissioners tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, they are excused. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have lots of minutes. Is this, is this working right today? Madam Chair, it wasn't working on Monday night.
So, no, it's still not working and so the, only the front speakers are working today.
Okay.
There's been a technical problem with the ones in the rear. So, we've been asked to make sure to speak very close to your mics. You can see I'm leaning in really close just to be heard.
Okay.
So, please make a conscious effort to speak very closely into your mic.
Thank you for that. All right, I'm making a conscious effort. So, I think we need to approve these minutes one by one because we have different people that have been absent for different minutes. The first one are the minutes, the first ones are the minutes for 9:10, 20:25, and everybody was present at, at that meeting. So, is there a motion to approve those?
Madam Chairman, so moved.
Mr. Mills has moved.
Second.
Mr. Stoneman seconds. Any other comments, questions, changes? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, those minutes are passed. The next are the minutes from 9:17. Mr. Dretzky was absent, so anybody here could make a motion.
Madam Chairman, so moved.
Mr. Stoneman has moved.
Second.
Mr. Mills seconded. Any other changes to the minutes? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those minutes are approved. The next one is for 9:24 of 25. Mr. Stoneman and Mr. Mills were absent from that meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
I'll second it, however, there's only two of us to vote tonight, so I think that means those minutes cannot be approved. Am I correct? We have to bring back the minutes of 9:24. And then 10:01, and absent, absent for that meeting were Mr. Ryan and Dr. Martin. And so, there are only two people here to approve those minutes, so I think those minutes need to come back as well. All right. Next, item number four is public comment. This is a time for anybody in the public to speak about something not on the agenda tonight. You're welcome to come to the podium. We ask that you state your name and your address, well, your city, not your address, just your city, and we will give you three minutes to speak. Seeing nobody in the audience getting up, is there anybody online? Okay, then we're going to move on to item number 5A, public hearings. This is a time for a public hearing for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Development Regulation Amendments. And are we going to have, yeah, Ms. Grage, thank you.
Good evening, good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, yeah. Good evening, everyone. I am Libby Grage, Planning Manager in Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department. I have a super brief PowerPoint that I'll just run through before you open the public hearing, if that's all right. Oops. So, the suggested order for us this evening is for staff to provide some background and also in your packet, you had a staff memo along with that same table that we've kind of been using this whole process with a new column added at the end, which has, or on the far right side, that has some updated staff recommendations. And so, I'll pull that up when we get there. And then, of course, opening the public hearing and then closing the public hearing and potentially deliberations and, and recommendations from the commission to the city council. As a reminder, the Planning Commission has reviewed some form of, of proposed amendments over the last year and a half. We had the discussion draft of the development regulation amendments that the commission reviewed and discussed over about six meetings between February and this month, 2025, and then, or, sorry, last month. And then, the full draft development regulation amendment document was released for formal public comment on September 17th, and the written public comment period ended today at 3:00 PM. We did receive two additional comments, written comments, that we've forwarded to you and also printed, and you have a hard copy of in front of you, or you should. So, this is the table that I was just mentioning, and this, you know, goes through and summarizes the proposed changes to the amendments, most, all of which have been reviewed by the commission. They're, you know, based on public comments that we've received and the, the last couple of meetings, staff has made some additional recommendations for certain items. And as I mentioned, the, this last column here is, is where you'll find those summarized. And so, I'm going to end the PowerPoint there, and then I'm going to pull up the, the staff, the actual staff memo, and ask the commission if you would like to go through these line by line, or if you've had an opportunity to review them and you would just have questions on certain ones. It's, it's sort of up to you. I'm happy to do, to do either.
What would you like, commissioners?
I have to admit, most of my notes are on the more detailed version in support.
So, I'm not sure what, which way you wanted to go then. So, which way do you want to go then, when you say that?
I would like the opportunity to page through the more detailed version. We can do that sequentially. Go through the staff recommendations first is fine with me, I just want a chance to go through the more detailed as well.
And please make sure you're speaking into the mics since we cannot hear you.
And what would you like?
Anything you'd like me to repeat?
What would you like, Mr. Ryan?
I'll go with Mr. Mills. Mr. Mills needs to go through it a little bit in more detail. I support that.
Okay, so, I think we're, I think we're all right, is what it sounds like. I did call Libby today with a question that I was asking her about something in the chart, but it's also in the red line edition, so we can talk about it at that point instead. That'd be fine with me. So, do you have that to pull up?
I do, yes. So, so I guess it might make sense after hearing, after hearing this, for me to just run through these additional recommendations that staff has, because we won't find those in the draft that we go through, because these are recommendations that staff is, has post-publication of the draft development regulation document. Does that, does that make sense?
Sure.
So, these, we won't find any commentary about them in, in the document that we're going to go through.
Okay.
Okay, so, yes, so, on page three, this is Title 19, Division 1, and this has the general and legislative provisions of the, of, for Title 19. And the only additional change, which we did discuss with the commission at the last meeting, I believe, is to remove the term "border" and "rooming house" from the definition section of the code. And that was based on our conversation last time, where it didn't, didn't seem as though that type of facility was needed in the code anymore, because the new cohousing, form of housing that has been added. So...
And, yeah, I, I do remember Mr. Ryan did have a question about that.
So, I don't know if you, when we discussed it, when, the last time I was present, but I believe that, that was one of those terms that was already in the IPMC, the, the property codes. I mean, I could pull it back up, and I think it was, rooming house was one of those terms. And, you know, I mean, do we remove it? Because then, if somebody's noncompliant under that, we have no way to enforce it, not like we're enforcing anything anyways. But then, or do we put it in the glossary and direct it to whatever name we've changed it? So, then, we can refer to that, that it's somewhere in there.
So, I did talk with the building official about that question, and I'm sorry, I, I didn't put information about that in the packet. But it, what it sounds like is, you know, this is, the zoning code is different from the property maintenance codes, and they have different terms and definitions, and sometimes they don't, like, they don't align. And we, if, if the city were enforcing a property maintenance code, it would use the definitions in that, in that code, not in the zoning code. So, the zoning code has, you know, different purpose. And so, he did not seem, see that there would be a problem with removing that term from the, from the development regulations.
If you don't find any conflict with it, make sure that we're able to still enforce it, and that'd be great, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
They can't, they can't hear it.
I have it low, or I got loud?
Loud would be good.
Yeah, if you, if you feel then that we're still being able to protect that, if that becomes an issue, we can protect it underneath the other requirements, then I don't see it necessary in here. So, as long as we have a way to enforce it, if somebody is, somehow, we end up in that situation, we've got to be able to cover it.
Yeah, understood, and, and that, it, it was not a concern for the, for the building official, so. He felt like we would still have the ability to enforce in those situations.
Sounds good.
Great. Okay, I'm only going to stop on the ones where we have, where I have a, a note here. And just to be clear about the purpose of, of this column, as I mentioned, these are, these are reflecting changes beyond what is depicted in the draft that went out for public comment. And so, just like we did with the comprehensive plan, where there were additional staff recommendations that the Planning Commission decided to incorporate into your recommendation, this would be kind of a similar situation, if that makes sense. So, this next one is in the Division 2 Procedures, which is what, the section that talks about our different land use permit types and the application process and procedures that we follow in their review. And we talked about the shoreline substantial development permits and the proposal to change the decision maker on, on those. And one of the questions that staff asked for input about was the appeal, local appeal of those permit types. We talked about the fact that there is a state level appeal that is provided for every one of those permit types, and staff was recommending that we not, need not double up, and that we make it clear that there is not a local appeal of shoreline substantial development permit decisions, just that they go to the, they're appealable to the shoreline hearings board. Does that make sense? Okay. Yes, thank you.
Can I add something in this general area that was brought to our attention? So, if you could go to 1912, the Housing Authority pointed out that we have a, a new definition in Chapter 1912, so this is on page four of our, of, of the document. It's, in fact, the very first thing. So, we created a definition for affordable housing, and we copied that affordable housing definition from the Growth Management Act. And the, the Housing Authority pointed out that it, and so, that's all good, the way it is, and I believe the Housing Authority is okay with that. What they pointed out in, they dug deep and found in Section 1942-050-D3A, we are talking about bonus incentives, and we refer to affordable housing, and define it in this other section, 1942-050. So, it's different than what our new definition is. So, I just want to make a proposal that we change that, the definition in 1942-050.D3A to refer to the definition of affordable housing in 1912-020, instead of defining it here, as well as any other instances we may find. We'll have to chase that down. This was submitted this afternoon, and, and so, as we were looking at it, I'm like, oh, yep, look at that, we'll try to fix that, so thank you.
If, if I understand the comment right, though, I'm not sure that's what you said. I feel like they're saying that the city code is wrong.
So, our existing city code in an area that we didn't touch refers to affordable housing and defines it in, in this obscure section, 1942-050. We've now created an actual definition in Chapter 1912, which is the definitions section. So, what we need to do is clear up that, that in 1942-050-D3A, that has an old incorrect, it's not incorrect currently, but it will be if we adopt the, the new definition for affordable housing, which is based on the state law and HUD financing and issues. So, we just, it's, it's a cleanup issue, that's all it is. The definition has changed since we created this one in 1942-050-D3A. It's a, it's a, like, that's in the weeds, that's a great catch.
We appreciate that. We, we appreciate those kind of catches, that's good. We want to be as, as clean as we can be. Thank you for that, and thank you, Housing Authority.
Okay, so, let's see, we didn't have any additional recommend, well, there were no changes in Division 3, so we don't even need to worry about those. Division 4, zoning and land use. So, in the permitted use matrix, which I will pull up, the, I noted here that the Planning Commission suggested adding single-family small lot as a permitted use in the Old Town zone. It was pointed out, and, you know, upon additional staff review, that this potentially conflicts with the, with the form and intensity standards that apply within the Old Town zone. There's a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The definition of a single-family small lot is a lot that has less than 5,000 square feet in area. And so, to fix that conflict, staff would recommend either, well, removing the P for permitted under the Old Town zone, excuse me, under the Old Town, Old Town zone for single-family small lots. So, it was proposed to be added, staff recommends removing it.
Removing it altogether, or making some exceptions somehow? You have a small X or something like that?
And the, so, currently, if there are, if there is a lot existing in the Old Town zone, which most of the Old Town is, you know, platted lots that are 3,000 square feet, that have been aggregated to create larger lots, and so, where there are circumstances where an, an existing lot is less than 6,000 square feet, doesn't meet the minimum, someone is still, or the owner would still be able to build on that, on that lot, they're not prohibited from doing so, it's considered a non-conforming lot. And so, that option is, is still there, but I, I guess I would, what type of exception are you thinking of if we were to go about this a different way?
Just the difference, just the difference between the 5,000 and the 6,000 square foot, because that's the discrepancy, right? I think, at least for me and, and I think others on the Planning Commission, we wanted to make sure that Old Town had similar density regulations to other areas, such as the R3, I believe, is, we were trying to make it similar, yeah, fair. I think that was the point.
So, let me just check something here before I... So, in the R3 zone, the minimum lot size is 4,500 square feet. I think I recall, and I might be incorrect, that the commission was discussing parity between Old Town and R2A. I could be wrong there, but that is, currently, they both have minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. And currently, a small lot, single family, is not a permitted use in R2A. So, if we were to remove it from the Old Town zone, they would still be similar, or the same, the same allowance for, for smaller lots.
Just refresh my memory, are there other areas? Because I, just like Mr. Ryan said, it seemed like Old Town was being treated favorably in the zoning, and, and our hope, or I'm speaking for myself, was to make sure that it was treated the same as other similar zones, and, and not have a special favor, and that's what it seemed at the time. So, maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken, maybe it was the R2A or something, but do you recall? Anybody recall this?
I'm not recalling whether it was R2A or R3, but philosophically, I felt like what we were trying to do was eliminate differences that were unnecessary, to be different, that they, if there's exceptions where they need to be different, yes, but rather than having them different across the board was what we were trying to avoid.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're increasing density everywhere.
Does the staff stand with mixing the recommendations?
Well, I mean, it's the Planning Commission's recommendation, of course. I guess I'll just, I'll just add that if the commission would like to keep that as a permitted use, then we would, it would necessitate other changes to the comprehensive plan, where the minimum lot size is discussed, and also the Table 1942 in the municipal code. So, it, it should have been caught earlier by, by staff, but that, that is what would be needed if we want to, if we want to keep it a permitted use, we'd have to make adjustments to comp plan and other sections of the development regulations.
And it's not a permitted use now.
Right. You can't create new lots that are 5,000 square feet or less, right?
Mr. Coleman, you want to weigh in on this?
Sorry, I was, I was doing more in-the-weeds stuff over here.
The, just the thing, as, as we think about parity, that's, that's, I think, our heart, and I think we're in agreement about that. It seemed like the increased density seemed to apply other places and not to Old Town. And we were looking to make sure that the city, if it's going to become more dense, that it was applying that density everywhere.
So, on table, at the bottom here, where it says triplexes and townhomes are now, are now allowed, I'm not seeing what zones, what zones are those newly allowed in.
So, that was something that the Planning Commission also recommended, was to allow for triplex and townhouse, up to four units in the Old Town zone, similar to what is being added in the R2A zone.
Right, so, that was, that was the attempt to, to create parity. The, also, we added Old Town for the single-family small lot. So, what, where, where is there no longer, where is there a lack of parity now?
Well, the, the single-family small lot is what we were discussing, and what Ms. Grage is saying is that this, even though the Planning Commission is recommending a... is recommending allowing that, it causes other issues, and the staff would be recommending against it.
Oh, okay. Just on the, the single-family small lots?
Yeah.
The more, the more that we have--
And we're now allowing the--
We can get closer to.
And the R3 and R4. So, I guess the question is, is the R3 and the R4 similar to Old Town? Or is Old Town more like the R2 and R2, or more like the R2A?
And that, that was her point, is that it looks like we're trying to have parity with the R2A, which could be. I recalled that it was R3, but maybe it was R2A. It's been a long time.
Yeah, R3 is, you know, a higher-density neighborhood than R2A.
And Old Town is a fairly high-density neighborhood with all those little lots.
Yeah. Similar to the R2A is probably what we would equate them to. Not that they're, not that they are equitable.
Right. Well, and Planning Commission could certainly, you know, recommend that that be left, and that, you know, the minimum lot size in Table 1942 be changed to reflect that. But it-- It would take additional work, which is fine. And the Planning Commission can recommend that to City Council without having the specifics about exactly what needs to be changed to accommodate that.
And the City Council would love to exercise their right to change whatever's been recommended as well, which they have a right to do as well. What would you like to do, gentlemen?
Libby, could you flip us back to the, I think it's 1942 that lays out the lot sizes?
Are these the new recommended lot sizes?
I'm sorry. That was the existing adopted code. You're right. I should not, I should--
Oh, yeah, there it is, the R3.
Yeah. They have a lot of small lots.
What does the "or" trying to tell us?
Are you, are you talking about where it says minimum lot size for duplex?
Yes.
That is where the minimum lot size for a standard, or a duplex with no restrictions on the maximum unit size, would be, for example, in the Old Town Zone, the minimum lot size would be 7,500 square feet. To reduce the minimum lot size for duplex to 6,000 square feet, there's a recommendation to limit the maximum floor area for each unit.
Okay. Thank you.
So you can see that the R2A and the Old Town are, you know, as far as lot sizes, are equitable there. So that is consistent with what Libby has recommended change.
What are your thoughts? You got to speak up.
So the question is, is the rest of the areas surrounding, these are all R3, right? We're down to the 4,500, 100, except for Old Town is still R2A, which is the 6,000 minimum. Is that correct? Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, that is, yeah, that's correct. I was just going to try and bring up this.
The whole thing about density, affordable housing, walkability. The big thing is, everybody is pushing, the denser we can get things, the more affordable, if there's more spaces, supply and demand come into play. And the big other thing is, everybody wants to reduce traffic. We need walkability. Walkability is going to, Old Town is one of the most walkable areas to get down into all the little stores. So, I mean, the tighter we can get it, then the more walkable, less cars going, more bicycles. So, density, in particular in that area, is very important if we're trying to achieve these goals of affordable, whatever that looks like. But density will help with that. So, I think we should bring it over down to the R3.
So--
Could you go back to the lot size? I just want to make sure that we're not making, you know, by, by doing something like that, not making too big of a change in Old Town. I just want to make sure that, you know, you know, the overall guidance that we've been trying to follow is incremental steps. And so, I just want to make sure that we're, this is an incremental change and not a big change. Which, that would be changing-- Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that would be a, anything. I think it would, I think it would still be an incremental change.
Similar to the others.
The, the other thing is, this is, we're, we're having a presentation of some recommended changes prior to a public hearing. I think it would be important to hold that public hearing and then have our conversation based on what the public has to say as well.
That's a great idea. I could, I could just move on and we can--
Yeah.
Come back to that. Okay.
So, public, we're wanting to hear from you.
All right. So, continuing on in Division 4, this is just another note to, this is another spot where rooming house is mentioned, that would be deleted within that, the permitted uses table. So, there was discussion at the last couple of meetings about indoor recreation within the LM1 and industrial zones. And I think we got pretty close to, staff had made some recommended changes, and there was discussion about maximum occupancy and having some more flexibility there for those types of facilities. And so, staff proposed some additional changes to the language that we'll get to down in 1944-090.
And just before you go there, help me out. What's NFA? I looked in my glossary. I didn't find it in the glossary.
It's net floor area. So it's-- It's different from gross floor area, but I'm not remembering exactly what the definition is, so I can pull it up.
That's okay. I just needed to know what it stood for.
Sorry, I'm fumbling.
Division, it's in Division 2.
Well, I don't think it's in the draft.
We could always ask Grok.
Pardon?
We could always ask Grok.
Okay. Yeah. I just have to get it set up like I have on my work screen, so I can actually get through this. All right, so definitions. Floor area. So net floor area, actual occupied area, not including unoccupied accessory areas, such as corridors, stairways, ramps, toilet rooms, mechanical rooms and closets. So it's just a different way of calculating floor area from gross floor area. Does that help? Should I move on?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the next one was, so this, these ones are just clarifying. Within the draft, we had comments, you know, in the, in the blue boxes that talked about what the request was, and then some information about either staff's recommendation, or some information for Planning Commission to consider. And we, we already talked about this, but I'm just memorializing the fact that, what staff's recommendation is, since it's not included in this document. So, just allowing for heavy service in the industrial zone was a staff recommendation, and then not, not permitting self-service storage within that zone. And then again, another cleanup item for rooming house. And then, one we talked about at the last meeting was changing indoor animal care from a conditional to a permitted use in the central business district. Moving on to the bonus incentives discussion in the marine mixed-use zone, there was some discussion last time about, for one particular incentive option, which was the space for a public park. There was some consensus, I think, that the city should be able to allow the owner to retain ownership of such a, such an area if the legal documents were in place to make sure that the area would be, you know, maintained in perpetuity and open to the public and, and all of those things. So it just added some language into that section here, underlined in italics. And then also, that the providing for 10,000 square foot public open space would be, would qualify for two bonus incentive elements, allowing for up to 20 feet of additional building height, instead of just one, which would allow for 10 feet. Excuse me. So the next one was also the request by MJB regarding the orientation of buildings. And I think there was consensus by the Commission and planning. Staff also recommends that, that proposed amendment not be approved, because, and there are already departure, there's a pathway to depart from that requirement in the code already, that can be reviewed and approved administratively. So it didn't feel that it was necessary to change the code there. The next one was the horizontal step-back requirement for buildings that exceed the maximum base height in marine mixed-use. And this is, you know, relating to stepping back upper portions of tall buildings to reduce the effect on, you know, of large buildings, basically, on the, on the surrounding areas and, and the street level. And I did do some checking into this. I think that the petitioner was under the impression that it was intended to apply just to, the step-backs were intended to apply just to the area above the base height. After kind of looking into that some more, I do think that the step-backs, or the 75% is intended to apply to the entire building, street-facing facade. And staff would recommend against approving the request to change this section.
Yep, I have a question.
Libby, just, I'm just curious, because I remember there's definitely some confusion on this. Any chance she circled back with the petitioner, just to make, I mean, because it seemed like it was just an understanding thing more than a, you know, actual needing to change anything? Does he understand, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I have not had an opportunity to connect.
Okay. I don't know if that's worth it or not. That's just, you know, because I know when I was looking at it, I was kind of confused also, which isn't saying much, but anyway.
Well, you know, I--
Okay.
I didn't do a great job explaining it last time.
I think where the confusion was, was the graphic versus the words.
Yes.
Trying to get those to line up.
Yes. That's a great point, that, that could be a recommendation that we fix that graphic. All right. The next one is rooming house term and definition, again, same as the ones before. The assist, so this is one that, this is a public comment that we received that was pointing out that potentially, so assisted living facilities are proposed to be changed from a conditional use to a permitted use in a couple of different zones, but including the R3 zone. And one of the recommended development conditions that would apply to a new facility in that zone is that it be, that there be a separation of at least, I think it's 1,000 feet, from other facilities, assisted living facilities, just to make sure that not, you know, one, there aren't, there isn't a concentration of them in one certain area that might, you know, affect the neighborhood. And so, after looking at the language and looking at the existing facilities, well, the concern in the comment was that the 1,000-foot separation would basically make it, so you couldn't build any, if you applied the 1,000 feet to the existing facilities that we have in town. And so, I would recommend that we add a clarification to that section that's, that says the distance only applies to, separation distance only applies to facilities within the R3 zone. So if, if you have a facility that's in an adjacent commercial zone, you don't have to apply a 1,000-foot separation. It's just facilities within the R3 zone.
Didn't the comment, as I'm recalling that comment from the community member, didn't it say that applying this the way it reads now would, yes, would, would say that there would be already all of the assisted living facilities that could possibly be in that zone? Already, that none, none could be built?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that was the concern that was conveyed. I did look at the maps and, you know, identified where the others, where the assisted living facilities are, and there's only one in the R3 zone right now. The others are in the R4 and commercial zones.
Okay. So what the citizen was saying was the 1,000 feet or whatever had to do with other facilities in other zones?
Right. That was their concern, I believe.
Okay, got it.
Yep. And so I just think, you know, fixing, updating that language to make sure it's clear would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. So there was some discussion about the co-living housing section and the new regulations that are applicable. And one of the sentences was confusing. And so, it was recommended that we just rewrite that to try to reduce the confusion. And I, I tried to do that. I don't know if I was successful, but basically, this, this section is talking about which design standards apply to new co-living housing. And it refers to Division 6. And it says that for purposes of applying design standards, co-living is to be considered a multifamily use. And so, any design standards that would apply to multifamily use would also apply to co-living. And there was some confusion about how parking played into that. And so, just trying to clarify that part, co-living has its own parking requirements, specifically under co-living in the table. That was a long explanation for a minor change, but-- Okay, so, this next one here is related to another section regarding co-living housing, where there was a-- there was a conditional... There was a C added into the row for co-living housing in the MS zone. And just noting here that that would not be necessary if the future land use map and rezone changes to the Olson Building property are approved. So that's just kind of a flag to make sure that we take that out if those are approved. The next one is another one requested by MJB that there was a little bit of confusion on the last meeting. And so I spent some more time trying to understand the intent behind this particular limitation on single-purpose residential development within that mixed-use zone on the east side of Q Avenue. So the 60% site coverage limitation is intended to result in a overall development of the site that has a mix of uses, not just single-purpose multifamily, so not just town homes, you know, or apartment buildings. But those facilities are allowed, but also recreational facilities and retail and commercial are also, you know, desired uses in that zone. And a mix of uses is intended in the code. And so that 60% limitation on the single-purpose residential is intended to make sure that that mix of uses happens. If we only include single-purpose residential and the minimum required parking and landscaping, which is what I was saying, oh, yeah, maybe I do agree with that. If we do that, or if the commission recommends that, then the concern would be that you end up... And I tried to make a slide here, but let's see. So really super rough, like blobs on the paper. But the single-purpose residential and associated facilities can cover... This is supposed to be like 60% of the site, right? And so you've maxed out that the other portion of the site would have to be a mix of other permitted uses. If we only say that the 60% includes the single-purpose residential and minimum required parking and landscaping, then that could potentially result in a situation where you have just the single-purpose residential and then, you know, additional landscaping and parking and other open space that is intended to serve the single-purpose residential, but it didn't get included in the 60%. So that could potentially result in a development that doesn't comply with the intent of a mix of uses. So staff, although indicating potential agreement at the meeting, is recommending against making that change. Are there questions about that? I know it's confusing.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, good. And there is... There is a... Not a departure, but a framework development plan that the... An applicant could apply and go through the process of increasing the amount of the site dedicated to single-purpose residential. But, you know, I think the intent in making that process a little more, you know, a little more public... Requiring public review and city council approval is because in developing that zone, it was very important that the mix of uses be achieved and that this area not just become residential development. And so there's flexibility, but there's a process. Okay. This is the next one, 1944 commercial uses. This is just the companion to that previous change regarding indoor recreation in the LM1 and I zones. And so the... This was where this particular development regulation applies within LM1 and I, limiting indoor recreation. And it gives kind of a list of what we mean by indoor recreation and that it may be permitted when the director finds that these criteria are met, that the use is designed to minimize conflicts with adjacent industrial operations, and the maximum occupancy doesn't exceed 30 unless the applicant, you know, successfully demonstrates that a higher occupancy won't, you know, disrupt the uses that are consistent with the purpose of that, of the zone.
If I remember our talk right, I like what you did there. Unless at the end of it, I like that addition. So, good job.
Anything else on that one? Okay. The next one is in... We're through Division 4. So in Division 5, we were made aware that the... You remember Chris Cuomo was here to talk about the street standards and active transportation network. And we were made aware that there were some errors in the map and also the list of functional classifications for streets. And so that is just recommended to be updated with the corrected information, which is in your packet. Also proposing to add an exception to allow for the Public Works Director to increase the allowed width of driveway cut in certain circumstances. And there's an attachment A where we... So here's the updated map that we would replace the current one with the corrected map. And then these are the red lines that show where there were some mistakes in the classification. So we would just make these updates in that section.
It looked like... I remember the J between 22nd and 29th didn't look like that got changed. And Mr. Cuomo said that he was going to look into that because that's where Island View School is. He was saying that there's low traffic there, and I don't think that's true.
Yeah. He... So he did. And he provided a memo that we had in the packet for one of the meetings in the last couple of weeks. You might not have been here. But he did provide some more information on that. And I'm not remembering exactly what it said, but it boiled down to, yes, he agrees that there is a school and there is a pool, but that there is not enough... And there is not enough room within the existing right-of-way to include a separated bike facility on the street. And so he made some recommendations for how that could be accommodated in the future, but he didn't recommend changing... I can't remember if it was the planning commissions thought that the classification should be changed or...
Well, I think he's... It's not the classification, but it was some kind of an exception that he put in there. Just a second here. It's on page 74 of... This is of 111 or 106 of 234. It looks like it's exactly as it was when he first presented it. Although this collector roadway is identified on the primary active transportation network, shallow bicycle facilities have been determined to be appropriate for this roadway due to low traffic volumes and traffic and travel speeds and to be appropriate and to accommodate on-street parking. The unique context of this roadway allows for an exception to the typical bicycle facility standard of five bike lanes for primary network roads. So he's kept it exactly the same and basically said, yes, it's a collector street, but we don't really need extra bicycle lanes, I think he's saying. And that road, of all roads, with kids riding their bikes and people riding to the pool, it looks like that didn't get changed.
Okay. So perhaps we could table that and I can see if I can find the memo that he provided and summarize it after we have the public hearing?
That's fine.
Okay. So the next item here was a holdover from the 2021 docket, which was a... An amendment to clarify when properties are required to... So when redevelopment happens or new development happens and a property is abutting the... An alley, a developed alley. Our code typically or says that access from the alley is required, that your driveway to a parking area has to come off of the alley and you don't get to have a new driveway onto the street. And the, you know, the intent of that is to, you know, reduce the number of curb cuts along a street which can conflict with pedestrians and make it less safe for, you know, walking and, you know, traffic safety and, you know, movements out of the driveway onto the street and trying to consolidate all of the traffic onto the alley where there's one single point of ingress and egress. So that's kind of the intent, but there was some difficulty in administering that section from staff. And so we have some potential amendments to help provide more clarity and certainty for staff and for permit applicants so that they will know upfront, you know, what is going to be required. And so I'll go to that section. So this was the proposed language change. And it basically, you know, keeps the section that says that driveways must access from the alley, but then provides a list of exceptions to that and that the applicability of the exception is determined by the Public Works Director. And those exceptions are that the proposed development is only one single-family residence and the existing alley surface is not currently paved or gravelled. And we do have that in, you know, quite a few locations throughout town where it's an unopened alley. And so it would not really be practical to require a new single-family home in the middle of a block to construct, you know, a new alley when all of the other homes around it already have a driveway onto the city street. So that's what that's trying to get at. And then also that alley access is not feasible due to topography or other environmental or physical constraints. Due to the relationship of the alley and the surrounding street system, use of the alley for parking would create a significant safety hazard. There's some allowance for an exception for ADA situations. And then also, this is a new one, if the majority of the existing residences along a public street block already have driveways, then a new driveway to the... Excuse me. A new driveway across the sidewalk to the public street may be permitted. So that's some flexibility that wasn't in there before that we think is a good addition to provide more certainty for everyone. Are there any questions or comments on this section? I know that staff, Public Works staff, is excited to have more clarity and more, you know, parameters for making the decision on when exceptions are okay. Okay. So that's it for Division 5. Division 6 is our project design standards. And I don't think we have very much here, just the rooming house cleanup item and the making a cross-reference. We talked about balcony projections into setbacks and clarifying that, yes, a balcony can project into a setback that's required under this section. This is just recommending that there be some cross-referencing between the two sections. Rooming house. And then finally, there... As you know, the 2021 docket of items was docketed with this periodic update. There are a couple of items on that docket regarding changes to the fence code and to the sign code that, you know, there's just simply... Things have changed, you know, over time. And with all of the other changes that are proposed within the rest of the code, some of those get at what these items were. And so staff's suggesting that those items be not considered as part of this process because they are... It could get complicated quickly. And these are not a required element under state law or the Growth Management Act to address as part of the periodic update. They can be addressed at any time. So that's what staff's recommending, that we consider those later.
So those are kicking the can down the road?
Yep.
Got it.
And that's it. That's all I have. I'm sorry that took so long. But if we'd like to open the public hearing, then I'll see if I can find the information about the J Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So now the big moment. We would like to open the public hearing for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Development Regulation Amendments. You're welcome to come to the podium, state your name and your city, and we will give you three minutes. Nobody? Anybody online, Ms. Watson? All right. Going once. Going twice. All right. I think we're going to close the public hearing then. And so now, commissioners, it's time for us to discuss what we'd like to do with this. And I think, as Mr. Mills has said, he'd like to go a little bit more in-depth. Would you like to go page by page or do you just have some areas with some questions?
I think in prior sessions we've done where you kind of just go through the pages and we raise our hand if we have something on that page. There's 100 pages here, so I don't want to talk about every page.
No.
But I probably got six or eight. I probably got six or eight things. My first one is on page eight.
All right. What's?
On page what?
Eight. Because it's eight of 111.
All right, page eight of...
111.
111. Anybody have anything before that? Okay, so what what is your question on page eight?
Just a clarifying question. The matrix shows that, basically, the Planning Commission has no decisions in this area, but that there is a City Council decision about three quarters of the way down on recommendations by the Planning Commission. That is, if we have some recommendation that we formally move forward initiated by ourselves, that then that is a requirement of the City Council to...
Well, which call, which column are you in?
Well, it's actually the far-right two columns, the Planning Commission decisions and the City Council decisions. Trying to understand what Planning Commission recommendations that the City Council would be reacting to in column four. Am I misreading the matrix?
So in type four, that is, that is Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations, where you make a recommendation, much like you're doing, would be doing on this Development Regulation update. So you make a rec, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council then considers the Planning Commission recommendation and makes their decision.
Thank you.
I do think that it might make sense to delete this, though. Because on these types of, so central public facilities, framework development plans, and site-specific rezones, there won't, there won't be a Planning Commission recommendation because we've...
That's kind of where I was getting.
Yeah.
I couldn't imagine what the recommendation would be that they would be reviewing because we're not, we're deleted from that action.
Yeah, we might need to...
Where, where, where is in that type four City Council decisions? Where is Development Regulations, Comp Plan Updates?
It's not in this table. It's in, it's just in 1916 Legislative Actions. So this is, this table is just for project permit or project actions, project-level permits, not for legislation.
And basically, projects don't come to us.
Pardon?
We're, we're striking the action, let me, let me rephrase it. What Planning Commission decision would City Council be acting on in column type four?
Yeah, I don't, I, I think that this is something that probably needs to be updated because the way that this has been proposed is that the Planning Commission does not hear quasi-judicial permit applications anymore, that to free up your, all your time for legislative...
That's my point, yeah.
Code amendments. So, yeah, you're right, and I, I think we need to probably update this table to clarify that.
Good catch, Mr. Mills.
That's why we keep you around.
All right. That settles page eight.
My next one's on 16.
Okay. Next one is on 16.
It's referring to the minimum lot size only permitted on, single-family only permitted on lots less than 6,000 square feet. And this actually appears in a couple of places. But if I am in an R4 zone and I have a lot that's greater than 6,000 square feet, say greater than 10,000 square feet, what's to stop me from subdividing that lot so that I have one lot that is 5,999 square feet and one lot that's whatever the rest of my property amounts to? And then I choose to build my R1 house on that lot that I've just carved out and leave the rest of it opens undeveloped?
So, I'm sorry, I was writing my notes and I missed the first part of what section we're talking about here.
On page 16 of 111, Table 19 dot 41 dot 040.
Mm-hmm.
The HAP recommendation 2.1.7, in the R4 area, we've got a note that says that can only be permitted on lots, and our residential can only be permitted on lots less than 6,000 square feet. If, if I've got a 20,000-square-foot house or 20,000-square-foot lot in R4 and I want to build a residential R1, a home, what's to keep me from subdividing that 20,000-square-foot lot so that I've got one that's under the 6,000 and that's the part that I build on and I just leave the rest of it open?
Well, there is now a minimum density in the R4 zone.
Okay.
So a new development proposal or subdivision would have to show how it complies with, or it would have, they would have to provide, they'd have to comply with a minimum density of 15 dwelling units per acre. So you couldn't subdivide into multiple single-family.
To get under the 6,000.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Just one, just referencing our earlier discussion, and then this is the table that we also looked at that we're now going to hold off on deciding.
Oh.
Is that correct?
Well, we better talk about it because hopefully we'll have a motion today and whether or not this is part of the motion.
Okay, but I, I think we said we were going to wait for the, somebody...
For the public comment.
And, oh, and that was it?
Public comment's over.
So we've had that, so now we do need to talk about this then and make sure that we...
Yeah, good point.
Okay. Yeah, I still don't know my answer for sure, but I agree that we need to talk about it.
Well, Mr. Ryan's point is that we want the Old Town to have some density because it's the most walkable place in our whole town.
Yep.
So this is the place that makes sense to be more dense, for sure.
And that's one of the biggest pushes of most of this.
Talk, so they...
Well, and the walkability has been one of the biggest pushes even by our consultants that we're trying to achieve. So that's our direct, what we're trying to achieve. Let's see what is most practical for the people.
So, so my question then is still with the staff. When I'm hearing that the staff doesn't think it's a good idea, I understand that we can still make a recommendation, but I don't really understand why it's not a good idea.
Yeah, just to clarify, I don't, I don't think staff necessarily is saying that it's not a good idea.
What you're recommending against it.
I guess what was recommended was a way to fix the conflict between the two sections that that's been identified. But, you know, I mean, Plant, Planning Commission has a point. The Old Town is in close proximity to services and, you know, good for, for walking and is adjacent to R3 and R4 zones. And so it was, so that's totally in the Planning Commission's purview to make a recommendation that we, that you go the other way.
Why were they opposed?
Yeah.
I guess we have to acknowledge that one of the points that staff was making was that if we stick by our guns on that recommendation, there are other changes that need to be made
Right.
to be, maintain consistency. And I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, work is work.
Okay, it sounds like for the four of us, we're in agreement to keep that for the reasons I think that Mr. Ryan mostly said.
The whole purpose why we're trying to achieve this.
It is the whole purpose.
So, I mean, I, why, why, why would you guys not be on board with this as far as the Planning Department versus going, hey, let's strike it out? I'm just out of curiosity.
So the recommendation was to address the conflict between the, the two. So if, if the, as I mentioned, if the, if we retain the allowance for small lot, single-family, we will have to go back into the Comprehensive Plan and the other section of the code to make adjustments to the minimum lot size. And that's, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against that. I mean, staff is, that was the recommendation we made and, I said, Planning Commission's free to make any recommendation you would like.
I mean, well, we're making the changes now. I mean, that's why we're doing this.
Mm-hmm.
So I think this is the time, even if we got to backtrack a little bit and, and change some other things, I think that's the purpose of why we're here. And that's also the whole center of why we're trying to get this density because it's a requirement and we paid a lot of money for the consultants who recommend all the same things we're asking for about Old Town. So I think it's well worth every penny that we've spent on outside consultants to follow their guide and to make this happen.
Okay, so we're in agreement, keep the P.
Fair enough. So Planning Commissions, if you were to make a recommendation tonight, could be to keep the P and, and identify what other associated changes need to be made to...
Right.
...for consistency.
Good. All right.
Libby, for clarification, would any additional changes to the Development Regulations need to be made in order to keep this, to, to keep the permitted use in Old Town as the Planning Commission has requested?
Yes. To, a change would need to be made to the Form and Intensity standards for the minimum lot size in the Old Town zone. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah. And are there any other changes?
I've, I've not had time to fully go through and vet that, but I know that there would be a change required within the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation section where it did, it does identify some minimum lot size ranges for every zone. So we need to change that. Those are the only two that I've identified so far.
What page is your next one on?
Does it make sense for us to go to the Form and Intensity section now, which should be on page 22, to button up this, this part of the request?
Sure.
So would it be the Planning Commission's recommendation that the minimum lot size be changed to 5,000 square feet? Or...
Are you, okay, so we're talking about on page 23, Table 1942020.
Yeah.
So the, the regular lot size is currently 6,000.
Yeah.
Yes. And a small lot, that use type or that housing type, small lot, single-family means a lot that is less than 5,000 square feet. So I guess making the minimum lot size 5,000 square feet wouldn't help, so it'd have to be lower.
I, I thought we were aiming for 4,500.
Okay.
But Mr. Coleman's point about not making such drastic changes, so would this then say 7,500 or 4,500? Which seems more...
Yeah, see, we would probably want to look at all of those minimum lot sizes for duplex as well.
Well, if we're, if we're following the R3, it would be, we would change for the lot size for a duplex.
Yeah.
We would change it from 7,500 or 6,000 for a small to 6,000 or 4,500 for a small because that's the same as the R3.
Sounds right.
And actually, I think this is the section that I called Ms. Gray John today, I think, because it came out of the Housing Action Plan. So my recommend, recollection from long, long ago with the Housing Action Plan. Minimum lot sizes, 2.4.1. My notes say that on 2.4.1, which is, help me out, is this the table, 19.442.020? Now I'm really getting messed up here. There we go. Lot size and development intensity in the HAP plan. Underneath, HAP Strategy 2.4.1. Underneath, HAP strategy, 2.4.1. Reduce minimum lot sizes for duplexes and reduce additional lot area needed for each additional attached dwelling. On my notes, I asked myself three questions in each of these. Would this result in more affordable housing? Yes. Would it increase the types of available housing? No. And would this be acceptable by the community standards? And I think on this one, the answer was no. At least that's my recollection.
Sorry, was I, I was, I was looking up the question about J Avenue.
Okay.
I missed what you said, I'm sorry.
This is my phone call to you today?
Yes.
About the Housing Action Plan, that 2.4.1, which is shown, actually, pretty much the whole Housing Action Plan looks like it's been, for them, for all I can see, pretty much wholesale adopted in these regulations. And at least according to my old, old notes on 2.4.1, I think the conversation was that these changes were basically too much for our community. Too, too many changes here in the density. I had questions about 2.4.2 and 2.4.4, but we'll talk about those in a second. Gentlemen, do you remember these conversations?
I remember your, your three questions. I don't remember the scope of what they were applied to, but my interpretation of your comments just now are that your concern is not just for the change to Old Town, but the change across the board.
Mm-hmm. My, my three questions applied to several of these. But in this particular one, as I'm thinking about neighbors, it seems like they're pretty drastic changes, in my opinion. And we understand the need for more density. We understand for sure the need for more affordable housing. But in this particular section, I'm not sure these numbers are palatable to, or would be palatable to the community. They seem a little too drastic. But argue against it and tell me I'm crazy because I might be. Because this was a long time ago.
We're talking about all of the numbers in this table? The changes are just Old Town?
All of the numbers for, for the HAP recommendation, 2.4.1.
I seem to recall that at the end of that conversation, maybe your perspective changed because we continued down the path of these numbers. And I'm not sure if it was the same night that we had the, I don't, I think it was long before the, the public hearing where we heard from a lot of people that were supporting housing options. So I, I don't, I don't recall that the momentum of the Planning Commission was to go different than what we've provided here.
And, and that might be true. I'm just looking at my old notes.
I know that in my mind, I shifted my attention to consistency rather than across-the-board degree of change. But that may have just been my own change.
Were these recommendations also, were they by, from our consultant? I'm trying to remember if Marcus was involved in this one.
Yes. So I'm looking at the actual Anacortes Housing Plan. And in the Housing Plan, they recommend many different changes, which in what were the development regulations we're looking at now, pretty much wholesale are being adopted as they sit from the Housing Action Plan. But I recall a conversation, I thought, that, in fact, the conversation seemed to me that it centered around not making wholesale changes all at once, that that wouldn't be something that our community would support and that, that we would have a more gradual change. At least that's, that's my recollection. But as Mr. Coleman said, I, I could have been convinced otherwise. That's possible.
I, I really believe so. Because that was, that was, we created this draft based on what the Planning Commission's guidance was back in those days. So if the Planning Commission had gone a different direction, we would have provided different recommendations. So our recollection is that we went with, and so now on the screen, I'm showing the HAP maximum lot coverage recommendations. And you can see.
Those are for two different cities.
So.
Because there's, I'm kind of skipping ahead before this is settled. But there's one other area that, again, in my notes.
Okay, so here is this section, sorry. 6,000 square feet, minimum lot size. Make, and make duplexes permitted by right at same 9,000 square feet. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Libby, this is, this is what we created the table off of. Or did they actually?
The table came straight from the Housing Action Plan. It's just literally exactly the same.
Yeah. Where is that table? No, in the Housing Action Plan where it talks about. Yeah.
You're looking for 241.
It's, it's 2.4.1.
And that's where I was.
Unfortunately, the pages are not numbered in the Housing Action Plan.
At the top right, they are.
Page 29.
So we're looking at the lot size.
I'm not meaning to put a monkey wrench in this, but I do want to make sure that we have it.
Thank you.
There we go.
Not sure why this was not coming up. So what we're, so you can see, this is, this is what we draft, we, our draft looks just like this. This is out of the HAP.
Right.
With the exception of now we're talking about adding Old Town to it because there was discussion amongst the Planning Commission about adding Old Town and to be similar to either the R2A or the R3. And so tonight's discussion, we've been going down the path of making Old Town similar to the R3.
What I'm saying is, that's not the only thing. That's what I'm saying. Can we just, maybe just take a peek? For example, in R2A, the first one with some change, currently it's 9,000 square feet for duplex. Correct?
Correct.
And the recommendation is to make it 7,500 or 6,000?
So, starting to remember things now. So this Housing Action Plan was put out in, or adopted in 2023.
Right.
When we started the Comp Plan Development Regulation Update Process Makers, and Bob Bangford and Marcus were here and presented some information with updated recommendations on minimum lot size for duplexes. And so that is what the table that is in the draft is based on. So it doesn't match this exactly.
And, and my point, I'm just using this as one example. From 9,000 square feet, minimum lot size, to 6,000 is a pretty significant change. It's a 3,000 square foot change. It's a third. It's reducing it by a third. Just as one example.
So I'm not sure if, are, are you asking a question to me? Or is this, I think it seems like a discussion that the Planning Commission just needs, needs to have. Because my recollection is that, well, what I just said, the, the table in the draft is based on our Planning Commission's, you know, the presentations from makers and those updated recommendations that they provided in the PowerPoint slides. And then the Commission staff developed a discussion draft of the development regulations that we talked about at multiple meetings. And we had a table that was all of the HAP recommendations. And then Planning Commission, or staff's recommendations, and then Planning Commission's recommendations.
So let's, let's just use one, let's just use the one example that I just said. So in R2A, right now, you have to have a lot size of 9,000 square feet, minimum, to put a duplex there. And in the revised, proposed development regulations, we could put a duplex on that same zone for 6,000 square foot lot.
Right. And, and that was, that was one of the new, or the updated recommendations from makers. And along with that smaller lot size came a maximum unit size.
Right.
And, you know, requirement for access from the alley. So the, the thought was that those development standards would result in a duplex that, you know, is likely to be around the same size as an average single-family home. But it would have two, two units. And so that, that smaller lot size of 6,000 is linked to the further, to the cap on unit size.
But again, when we're talking about the density, we're reducing the density by a third from 9,000 to 6,000 in this one example. And at least in my notes, it would not be something, it's too drastic for our community at this time. Reducing that lot size that much, making so much more density is, in this particular one, would not be acceptable, as I recall. I might be wrong. I could be wrong. It was one time on a Tuesday, I was wrong and they declared a national holiday because of it.
Yeah, I, I don't recall there being a, a discussion, and I could be wrong too. But I don't recall there being a discussion at a Planning Commission meeting that would have led to something different than what was proposed here. Like maybe there was conversation about it, but it wasn't clear to staff, at least, that that was the direction that the Commission wanted to go.
So, so I bring it to the Commission. Are you thinking it's fine the way it is being proposed or not?
I've been sitting here replaying my tapes from, that's got to be a year ago now. I don't recall whether it was collectively or individually, but in my mind, I had moved from concern about the degree of change and had been focusing subsequently more on consistency across the various zones. That doesn't mean my concern for acceptability went away, but for some reason, whether we kind of had agreement or maybe I just moved on in my own mind, I moved to, away from the degree of change to focus more on the consistency of the change. Rightly or wrongly?
You know, I'm having some recollections that the discussion then moved to, well, we still have open space requirements and parking requirements and all of the things that would prevent it, prevent overcrowding. And then the conversation kind of moved away from, from concern and then I think we moved on to the, to the next thing. I, my recollection is that there was, after that conversation, that this was still the direction that the Planning Commission was comfortable going.
I mean, that, that would be my hunch too. I don't, I don't remember the specifics, but that we did talk about it and that we did agree to this. I don't, I trust Libby that, you know, she would have put in whatever we, whatever we recommended at the time. So I can't, I don't remember enough to kind of relitigate it now to tell you what, how, how we allayed the concerns. But that, that would definitely be my hunch is that, that's, that's what we agreed upon.
And if I, if I remember, didn't this kind of go along when we were kicking it, kicking around conditional versus permissible at the same time? If I'm, because I remember some of that.
Well, I guess the question is now, are we fine with the chart the way it is? Are there modifications that you'd like to make? I would like to maybe take out the asterisk ones. What would that do? From 9,000 to 7,500 seems okay to me. From 7,500 to 6,000 seems fine. In fact, all the other ones. I guess it's the 9,000 to 6,000 or 7,500 to 4,500 that seems pretty drastic.
I would be okay with that. Also, as an alternative, in our motion, we could, to the council, we could include an expression of, or request that they revisit the degree of change in the square footage requirements and cite the specific tables that we're talking about. That's kind of kicking the can to them. But I'm also okay with, I would go along with taking out the ORs so that it, the, the degree of change is minimized. Or I shouldn't say minimized, degree of change is made a little less. By eliminating the ORs, where we're not dropping from nine to six or 7,500 to 4,500.
What do the rest of you think about that?
I'd be okay with that.
Guess I'm the only one running the other direction, just going, you know, their, times are moving fast. Density, density, density. I'm not a big fan that Anacortes is supposed to get this dense. But at the same time, I'm going, we need places for our workers. We need places for our single parents and nobody can afford a large lot. Or renting a large apartment. So if we can make those denser, then those costs are a little bit less because it's that price per square foot. That just, my, me trying to be rational about it, do I like in the first place that we're doing density? No. But if we're gonna do it and we're trying to get staff in town, we're trying to get, you know, service workers in town, we're not gonna get it by them trying to rent a 3,000 square foot house because they can't afford it. You know, they're gonna rent a 900 square foot apartment for their, and their two kids. Yeah, that's the realistic side of it when you start going into the density and price per square foot. So affordable. Large is not affordable. So that's where I would sit on that one. So I'm kind of rubbing, going backwards on it. So.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that under state law, we are required now to allow for two accessory dwelling units on all lots that are permitted for single family homes, regardless of, you know, lot size. And so, you know, theoretically, a 6,000 square foot lot could have a single family and two ADUs detached, you know, in a multiple different configurations. And there's not, you know, that's just something that is required for us to integrate into our code. A duplex or attached housing form is, is more economical to build typically, I believe. More energy efficient, you know, and has other benefits. And, you know, based on these regulations would be size limited, you know, intended to keep the scale of the single family or of the current, you know, neighborhood form. And so I just want to point that out as something, something to consider.
Can we ponder this for just a second? Because I have at least one other related issue. And we'll circle back here. In 2.4.4, just a little bit farther.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
What?
Would it be all right if we took a quick break?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
How long?
Five minutes.
Okay, we'll take a break. It's five to eight. We'll take a break until eight. How about that?
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to get back in session? Okay. So would you like to circle back first to the J Avenue? Are we still talking about HAP 2.4.1?
I haven't fully wrapped my mind around J Avenue. So if we want to keep talking about 2.4.1.
Okay.
That would be good.
So what would the implications be if in the chart, Table 19 dot 42 dot 020, if that chart eliminated the square feet that says, that say OR? So in, for example, in R2A, currently 9,000, change to 7,500 per the recommendations of the HAP, but take out the 6,000.
So remove the, the option for a, a small duplex.
Correct.
Basically.
What would be the implications?
Well, for the rest, there would need to be some updates to the housing or the zone specific regulations in 1943. Just to remove the associated development regulations for small duplexes. Are you asking about the implications for other changes throughout the code or implications?
Is it doable? If it's, if it's doable, we've got three of the four commissioners here tonight willing to make that move and, and move forward. If that, but we, we value what staff has to say. And if we are, you know, putting a monkey wrench in this, let us know.
I think it's certainly doable and would just be, you know, reflected in your recommendation to, to council. I just think from staff's perspective, with the state mandates for allowing multiple ADUs on a lot, that meets the minimum lot size for a single family. You know, it's, we're already required to allow up to three units. And they theoretically could be detached units. Allowing for a duplex to be constructed on the same size of lot, you know, allows you to, you know, potentially allows for.
Twice as much density, twice as many people.
Well, but with a single family and two ADUs, that's three homes.
Good point.
And you don't have to own it. Maybe you don't have to live there.
That's three homes. So it's really a difference in what, you know, a duplex is to attach, it's in a, you know, two attached units, which is more compact than, you know, a single family plus an ADU, plus an, plus an ADU. So just being aware that if, if you do recommend eliminating that option for a duplex on, on the smaller lots, that you'll still, you know, that still ADU, two ADUs will be allowed on lots that size with a single family. So that's, am I making sense? So it's just eliminating a, you know, a, a form of, of housing where through the other changes in code where you're already, you know, you can expect to see. Sorry, that didn't make sense. Through the other changes to the accessory dwelling unit code, you can have a, a single family and two ADUs on a 6,000 square foot lot. But we're saying you can't have, if we take this allowance out, we're saying you can't have a duplex or two units on a 6,000 square foot lot.
Right. Well, what we're saying is the, the single family and the two ADUs is required by state law. And that density is required by state law. And it's significant, a significant change in our community. This one is not required by state law. We're still absolutely in favor of more density by making the changes that were originally recommended by the housing action plan. We're just not minimizing the size of the lot by a third. On the other hand, bringing this to the city council, knowing what I know about the city council, bringing a planning commission recommendation, which is against the staff recommendation, I can tell you right now, they're not gonna listen to the planning commission recommendation. So the question is, you know, what's right? What's best for our community? Because we're here to represent the community. We're just community members. That's, that's who we are and that's what we should be representing. So we can make the recommendation that I think would be more in line with our city. But it is likely, highly likely, if it is against the recommendation of staff, that the city council will go with the recommendation of staff, pretty 100% I can tell you. So what would you like to do, gentlemen?
Well, that just makes me want to recommend it, or make our recommendation even more. Let them, that's fine. They, they don't. They don't have to agree with us.
My previous comments still stand. I, I will point out that the ADU comparison, state mandates that it be allowed, but they're still subject to setbacks and lot coverage and whatnot. So, how small a lot can you put, add two ADUs plus a primary residence on? It gets to be a math challenge. And of course, that would be lot by lot.
All right, Mr. Ryan, do you stand by what you're saying?
Oh, yeah, me being the rep, you want it, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll hold where, where I'm at with the, with the density. Just because that's the way I think. Not that I favor it. But I think it's the most effective if we're able to get that kind of density. I mean, are we going to do it? Because the cost of building is crazy. The option would just be there, that's all. It's not that anybody's racing in town to buy a, a lot for $300,000 to build a $300,000 affordable house on there, so. Still ridiculous.
So, would it, would it be beneficial to put a bow on this and actually make this a motion? Or should it be just incorporated into the general motion that we're about to have for the whole, all of the development regulations?
I don't think a separate motion is necessary, but as far as bookkeeping, it'd be nice if you just were clear about what changes or not changes we're making.
So, I think what three of us are saying is that in Table 19 dot 42 dot 020, where it gives the option of or 7,500 or 6,000, 6,000 or 4,500, we're taking out the or.
Okay. Is, is that what the Planning Commission's direction is?
That's what three out of the fours.
So, that, to complicate matters, what led us here is we had talked about changes in Old Town. And so, there was a discussion about currently, it says 7,500 or 6,000. And then the Planning Commission said they wanted to see it 6,000 or 4,500 to match the R3. So, where do we land on that one, then?
We won't be able to densify it.
I think it would be the 6,000, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Just 6,000 with no or 4,500?
Do you want to really complicate matters, though? I thought the P that we started talking about at the beginning was under the just single family lot, not even the duplexes. If you go back to the, where we were looking, yeah, thank you, Jennifer. If you go back to where we were originally looking, it had, it actually had nothing to do with duplexes.
Yeah.
Right.
That is true.
Yeah.
So, you know, our, to, to back the bus up a little further on page 16, where we started with the discussion of single small, single family small lot, that P that we originally recommended and then staff said, oh, wait, there's some contextual things that make it tricky. Is, and the Planning Commission firmly landed on, yes, you wanted to keep the P. Are, are we still keeping that, that P for the single family small lot on page 16?
I would like to, to do that just because there again, we were talking about density and walkability for the single family.
So, I think the answer is yes.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that as, as things moved and ebbed and flowed, that it didn't ebb further away from that position, too. Okay, great.
Isn't this fun?
This is what it's all about.
All right.
I do have other questions.
Okay. So do I, okay. Mr. Mills, take it from here. Where are we?
Uh, let's see, my next, some of these got ans, some of these got answered during the discussion earlier. Just to comment on page 28, and it pertains to, goes back to the presentation, talking about dedicating small park areas to the city. And I think the language that we're using is consistent with this. I, I feel pretty strongly that it's not in the city's best interest to accept turning of title and/or maintenance responsibility for small park areas scattered around the city. And I think that's where we're, where we're at.
What do you mean, turning the title?
Well, we had the discussion with MJB two weeks ago, for instance, on reducing the open space requirement from 10,000 to 5,000. And there was a discussion about who's responsible for maintaining that open space. As a city, we have a lot of responsibility for maintaining large park parcels. And it is challenging to accept a whole bunch of small, you know, 3,000, 5,000, even 10,000 square foot parks that are in neighborhoods and in mixed-use developments. So, I just wanted to make a comment that, in support of the wording that I think we've got in there now, that discourages the city from taking over maintenance responsibility. If I was crafting it myself, I would put some sort of a minimum size in there that says anything below X,000 feet is, stays with the developer or the HOA and not the city's responsibility.
And when is it on city land?
Well, that's, has to do with turning the title. If you're in a mixed-use development or even in a PUD and you've got these little small pocket parks, it's best for the HOA or the developer to retain maintenance responsibility. The city staff has enough expense and logistical challenge dealing with our thousands of acres of open space and parkland and forestland without having to take under our responsibility the maintenance for a portfolio of pocket parks. That's all my comment. And I think our language, with the exception of putting a quantification into the size of the parks, serves my purpose. I just wanted to reinforce it.
Just to clarify, this particular item is just related to the Marine Mixed Use Zone east of Q Avenue. And it is one of the bonus incentive options. Okay. And I think that, that 10,000 square foot number, no less than 10,000 square foot number was arrived at, you know, through a public process that probably included Parks Department input on, you know, what would be the minimum size park that, you know, they would feel comfortable. But anyways, so I don't know i, if we want to add in.
I wasn't proposing any change. I was just trying to, trying to reinforce what we had already done.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Chairman, I go for a long ways before I have the next question.
Well, I'm going back to the Housing Action Plan again. And this time, it's 2.4.4 minimum density. And this one might be okay. In your chart, at the beginning of this packet, it's on page 10 of 27. it's also on page 24 of 111. And it's also the same thing is on page 147 of 234. All the same. This density question, I asked the same questions. Does it provide for more affordable housing? Yes. Does it increase the types of available housing? No. Is it accepted by the community? My notes say yes in the R4 zone only. And I think that in the charts, it has moved to, I think, all the zones or almost all the zones.
So, the, the chart, Table 1942 020, on page 24 of the Development Regulation Amendments, yes. So, currently, there is no maximum density in R3, R3A, or R4. So, there's, there's really no change there other than just to strike out those words. So, the, the change is to R4A, Old Town, R2A, and R2.
It looks like you've, you've got, you've got two references to 2.4.4. The second one are where the changes are, correct?
Are you ta, sorry.
Must be a typo there.
Are you talking about this chart?
Also that chart, yes.
Okay, so 2.4.4 minimum density, adding a minimum density for the R4 zone. And then maximum-
That one's fine.
Maximum density, remove the use of maximum density from remaining residential zones except R1.
Yeah, that's the one which possibly is fine. My notes say that we're removing it only from the R4.
Well, it already does not exist in R4. There's no maximum currently in R4 or R3 or R3A.
So, on page, yeah, right there, the crossouts are not changes?
Well, I mean, technically, yes. But substantively, you can see that in the maximum density cell here under R3 and R3A, it says C minimum lot size.
And there aren't any.
There are minimum lot sizes, but we don't use density as a measure of, you know, we don't-
Okay.
Yeah, and same with, with R4, it says none, which is-
That's fine. That one's fine in my mind. So, now we're back to Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I don't have anything again until page 56 of 111. So, others may have stuff before then.
Did you say 56?
56 of, 56 of 111 is where he's going next.
That's where I was going, but others may have.
You want me to go ahead and comment on this page?
Yes, please.
Several months ago, I raised the question of impact fees on ADUs. And was, I think I got confirmation that there currently is no impact fees charged or very little. And that there was no plan in place to address that. What's the proc, and this page reminded me of it in item 10. ADUs are subject to public health, safety, building code. Environmental permitting requirements are applicable to the principal unit unless specifically stated otherwise in the section. Reminded me of the idea of, of impact fees. What's the process of we as a commission want to inject a recommendation to look at charging it? There is an impact. So, obviously, my predilection is that ADU should have to pay impact fees. The question in my mind would be how much? And my logic is that by not having impact fees, that is a subtle or hidden subsidy to the development of ADUs. I'm not necessarily against encouragement on economic terms, but I'd like it to be in the light of day rather than kind of hidden from view. So, my question is, how do we go about raising the issue of impact fees?
We could just put a, maybe put a finding in your recommendations that says Planning Commission recommends City Council explore the idea of some sort of impact fee for ADUs.
That's fair.
I, I thought I saw something earlier in this packet that said that the new state law prohibits impact fees for ADUs.
That would take care of that.
Does not prohibit, there's a, there's a, like, maximum amount that can be charged as compared to a single-family residence. I think that there's like a maximum of 50% of what you charge for a single family could be charged for an ADU. I don't know if that's the exact percentage, but I believe it is.
We, we could make it subject to any state law requirements.
Yeah, they are for profit.
Okay, do you have any more?
Oh, yes. Libby, I brought this up at our meeting two weeks ago on page 58 of 111. The Exhibit A that shows the active transportation network map. I still believe that we some, need to somehow indicate, differentiate, I should say, between planned transportation network and in place. Whether this just gets relabeled as planned or somehow by the legend, we differentiate between what is in place versus not in place. And I'll admit to you right up front, my hot, my personal hot button is the Gremish Channel Trail. If you look at this map, it would suggest that that Gremish Channel Trail is completed. And it is not. By default, you'd have to assume it's completed because the designation of the exhibit.
I don't, I don't think that that is the, so I think that the intent of this map is to identify, to help identify what improvements are required when new development happens. And so, this would be the Planning Commissioner or the City Council saying, yes, this is the, this, these routes are what make up our planned future active transportation map or active transportation network. And as new development comes in, you know, they are required to, you know, look at this map, look at the functional classifications map in the code. And that combination ident, helps identify what improvements might be required along the frontage of a parcel to ultimately achieve the, the requirements of the active transportation and functional classification maps.
And I did read words to, in support of what you just said. For me, it would be as easy as indicating that this is, you used the word too planned. And according to its planned active transportation network map. And according to this, planned active transportation network map. That would satisfy me right there.
Sure.
So if you look on page 57, Item E, the last, it says, "Promote increased pedestrian and bicycling use throughout the city with the completion of the Active Transportation Network illustrated in Exhibit A below." So this at least insinuates that you need to complete the map on the next page. So it's a little bit of a stretch to say, to, you know, make that cognitive leap from there to looking at the map, and then understanding that the map is the completed map, not the actual map, but that's what it is intended to be.
Yeah, and human nature is, you look at this, and I think adding the word "planned" to that exhibit title would be totally consistent with the wording that's on the previous page. Or alternatively, yeah, I think to Libby's comments, trying to differentiate planned versus in place would hurt the objective that the rest of the language is trying to, that as a developer comes in. Now, Gremes Channel Trail developers, for the most part, it's a moot point, but anything that involves a active transportation along a road right-of-way, they need to know that information, whether or not it's completed or not, doesn't matter to them, but... So I agree with what you say, John. I just think that this is a standalone, people tend to take it as a standalone, and I would like to see the word "planned" added to the description in the exhibit title, I should say.
That's easy enough.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I think it's a great call. Robert can take care of that real quick.
My next thing is not till page 67. The top paragraph talks about when Oaks and 12th get expanded, and talks about the parking, and elsewhere, we talk about the active transportation route along there. I think it would serve us well to acknowledge that when this is widened, that that would be part of the revisions as well.
Which page are you on? Yeah, where?
Page 67 of 111. Talking about the principal arterials, 12th Avenue, or 12th Street and Oaks Avenue. And it talks about that's, part of it has been widened, part of it hasn't. And when it, when it does get widened, that parking will be addressed, along with land uses along the roadway, challenges of width of the right-of-way that's available. I think acknowledging that we have a need, in fact, in our active transportation plan diagram that we just talked about, I think shows a bikeway all the way along 12th.
Actually, in the City Council meeting on Monday night, two of the City Councilors stated that they were not initially aware that a total of 13 parking spaces would be taken away because of this project. And they had apparently heard from businesses about this huge impact.
I'm sorry, which project was that?
The...
Widening of 12th?
Yes. I think from 12th, I don't know which businesses, they didn't say, or where exactly, but the project from, you know, 13th to 11th. So...
This section is referring to the two-lane cross, existing two-lane cross-section.
What's the wording that you're suggesting, Mr. Mills?
I didn't have specific wording. I just was talking about the challenge, in this section, the discussion is about the challenges of 12th and Oaks in terms of right-of-way, and that when we can to do widening, we also talk about elsewhere in the plan, that being a marked or on-road bike lane. And so I was just saying, for consistency, it'd be nice to reference that as one of the considerations when 12th and Oaks get redeveloped.
Yeah, we do need a bike lane.
Because, I mean, it's speaking to it all the way out to the ferry terminal, I believe. It's not just in the downtown portion.
So are you, are you okay with leaving the wording the way it is in this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just expressing a desire to make an addition to reference bike lanes as part of that redevelopment effort.
Okay.
Well, it does show it on Figure 1, bike lanes.
The cross-section, yeah.
Figure 1 is the, you know, desired future cross-section. And then the next sections are talking about exceptions from that desired cross-section.
And in fact, in the paragraph at the top of 67, it says, "When the road is widening, however, limited right-of-way may prevent parking along segments of 12th and Oaks. In these cases, parking may be removed from the cross-section showed in Figure 1 to provide a 46-foot right, 46-foot roadway with a 66-foot right-of-way with approval from the Public Works Director." So if you look, when you get down to 46 feet, that includes a bike lane, two-foot buffer, 11-foot lane, 10-foot turns, center turn lane, and then the opposite direction, 11-foot travel lane, two-foot buffer, and a five-foot bike lane. So what this says is it actually includes the bike lanes, it just eliminates, what you're supposed to do is eliminate the parking lanes before you eliminate the bike lanes.
Yeah, I see that interpretation. Good. Yeah, I hadn't noticed that before.
So we're okay to leave that one as is?
As is is fine.
What's next?
I think that's it, for me.
Okay, so what's left is page 73 of 111. And that's the question that you're looking up about J. Avenue.
All right.
So he's saying, J. Avenue between 22nd and 29th is an exception, even though it's a collector.
So I am just gonna have to walk my, walk myself through this, so you get to come along. So, minor arterial collectors. So collectors are streets that assemble and concentrate residential traffic and direct it toward the higher-order arterial system, and J. Avenue between 22nd and 29th is designated as a collector. Let me just check to make sure that that wasn't changed in the set of revisions that he had, that they sent. No, okay. So moving along, this figure is showing the typical cross-section, collector cross-section on the primary active transportation network. Is J. Avenue on the primary transport, active transportation network?
Secondary.
Secondary, thank you.
So on page 73, that might be it.
Secondary, okay.
Yes, there it is, at the bottom.
Secondary. So this is the ideal cross-section.
Yep.
And then here are exceptions from this standard. So J. Avenue between 22nd and 29th currently provides 36 feet of roadway. Charros are provided.
And a reminder, charros are...
Charros are, I don't know if you can see the little bike symbol here?
Okay.
The two chevrons.
Yeah, so it's supposed to indicate that you're supposed to share the lane with vehicles and bicycles.
This is the one he was going to look into.
Yeah.
Because this is the one that is on, where a school is, and he's, he's wanting the bicycles and the traffic to be in the same lane. Probably because...
I think that's how it is right now.
I think bicycles are on the sidewalk, for the most part.
No, there's charros, so it's a shared lane with bikes and vehicles.
Yeah. No, it's in front of Island View Elementary School.
I've lost connection with the...
It's from, the corner of J. and 22nd is where the pool is. And if you head from 22nd south to 29th, you will pass Island View School on the left-hand side. And certain times of the day, there's a lot of traffic on that road.
So here's the memo that, that was provided in the packet on, in the packet for the October 1st Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
So he's saying, "Planning Commission expressed concern that charros were considered acceptable along this corridor, collector arterial, fronting, school tennis courts, softball field, and elementary, and a church, instead of a dedicated five-foot-wide bicycle lane, normally required on a collector arterial." Does that accurately describe what the concern was? Okay. So, let's see, he's saying J. Avenue currently, between 22nd and 29th, currently provides 30-foot, 36-foot roadway, curb-to-curb, with one travel lane, and on-street parking in both directions. Charros are provided to accommodate bicycle travel, so that's the existing condition. Although this collector roadway is identified on the primary active transportation network, which typically would require the separated bike lanes, charo bicycle facilities have been determined to be appropriate for this roadway, yeah, due to low traffic volumes and traffic speeds to accommodate on-street parking.
So that first, that first paragraph is exactly what you have.
Yeah.
And is exactly what he had originally put.
So then he provides some options for, yes, I think that we could certainly update that language. I think we should. And I thought that he had provided some description on what to do there, but we could update the language to reflect what is actually happening, you know, that it's not really low traffic. So he says, "As stated above, the physical space available between existing curbs on J. Avenue is 36 feet. For J. Avenue to meet the collector arterial standard and for the primary active transportation network, corridor length capital improvements would be required. Widening the street surface by 10 feet to accommodate five-foot bicycle lanes on each side would require reconstruction of, of, on or both sides of the street, potential right-of-way acquisition, and possible relocation of power poles and utilities. This would have extremely high costs and is not considered a feasible option. The city and school district could work together to change the existing bicycle treatment on J. Avenue from the charros to dedicated on-street or off-street bicycle facilities, according to the options described below." And then he went through and provided some other options for changing the configuration for bicycle lanes. But I don't think that he proposed making any changes in the code. This would be more of a, you know, a capital project to affect any improvements on a corridor wide scale.
So for our motion, as we're talking about different amendments, could we put that, we're recommending a review of that J. Avenue between 22nd and 29th, and the adoption of Option 1 or 2? And let the people that know best decide which option would be best?
Yeah, you could do that.
Could you say that again? What was your proposal?
I'm just trying to figure out how we can make a motion here tonight to pass this forward. And for this one in the motion, if we could have a review of the J. Avenue collector recommendations, I guess? Because the recommendation, right now, as it stands, is just leave it alone as an exception. And yet, he's come up with a couple of possible changes. So we, if we recommend that this particular section be reviewed again with the possibility of adopting Option 1 or 2?
Reviewed again by whom?
I would say by the Public Works Director, if I were saying somebody.
Oh, and so your recommendation would be like, to be, have the Public Works Director look at it, and you're cool with whatever he then recommends?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just, it's, it's different from what's actually in the Development Regulations. And I don't know which is the better choice, but it's, I guess he's, he's suggesting how to mitigate the problem. how to mitigate the problem. How to mitigate the exception is what he is suggesting, it sounds like.
And, whoops. Are, are you, I mean, is this a situation where you don't agree that there should be an exception? Like, it should just be required that the full facilities be built?
No. Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting that.
Okay.
I'm just saying that it's not true that it is, that it has been determined to be appropriate for this roadway due to low traffic volumes and travel, travel speeds to have this sharrows arrangement. It, it's, this paragraph is not accurate. And he's rec, he's, he's recognizing that by providing two options in how to mitigate the exception.
What is the speed limit on J?
It's either twenty or twenty-five.
There must be a school zone there that...
It's a school zone, yeah. I just want to make sure that our development regulations provide for the safety of our children that are riding bicycles along with the traffic. And that picture, yes, is right from Twenty-Second Street. And you can barely see the school in the background, but it's there. So, I think, I think we can just, as we're making a motion tonight, I think we can just say that we're adopting this subject to a re, review and revision of this section about J Avenue, and incorporating the recommended either Option A or, or Option One or Option Two into the language. We don't have to solve it, I think we can just say that there's going to be a change there.
So, that would be in a motion that is sending the development regulations to the City Council?
Right. Correct. I'm trying to make a list, because we have a recommended motion on page one of twenty-seven and on page two of twenty-seven. And on page two, it looks like that's going to be the motion. And we're, we're going to add a few changes. One will be the map title on page fifty-seven to add the word "planned." One will be a review of J Avenue language to include Option One or Option Two. One will be to revise the density map on nineteen dot four-two dot zero-two-zero to remove the, I don't know if we say, it's just the "or," the, the smaller density. I don't know how we say that exactly. I wrote down "impact fees for ADUs," I guess that's not going to...
That's a finding.
Pardon?
That will include as a finding, not a change to, that doesn't need to be as part of the motion.
Got it. And then, I wasn't sure how to write down the, the P for the Old Town. The five-thousand foot...
Keep it as shown in the draft, as opposed to how it's shown in our current memo.
Yeah, so affirming the, or, yeah, retaining the P as shown in the draft development regulations and making associated changes to form an intensity standards for consistency, because we'll have to do that.
And so, that, like, when you're referring to the changes for the, for the P, it's Table nineteen forty-one oh-four-oh, "Single-Family Small Lot." And so, it's retain, or, or we can just say, recommend "Single-Family Small Lot be permitted in Old Town."
And associated changes in... What did you say?
And I said the...
Form an intensity standards on page twenty-two.
Yeah. Nineteen forty-two oh-two-oh.
Okay. All right, here are the one, two, three, four changes that I think need to go into a motion. And the draft motion is on page two of twenty-seven. So, with the changes, one, retaining the single-family small lot, making it permitted in Old Town in nineteen dot forty-one dot oh-four-oh, and the associated changes in the form and intensity standard, that's one. Change, changes to the density map nineteen forty-two oh-two-oh by removing the, the smaller lot options. Is that how we should say it?
Removing the small lot options for duplexes.
We're, we're recommending the...
The smaller lot options preceded by the word "or."
Yes. We're recommending the density changes made in the Housing Action Plan preceded by the additional changes. Yes, for duplexes. That's two. We're, we're wanting to review the J Avenue exception for collector arterial standards for J Avenue Twenty-Second through Twenty-Ninth to revise, to include either Option One or Option Two as determined by, I guess, I'm thinking the Public Works Director. And the last change...
Before you leave that one, would you want to include by reference, I think the date on that memo of Option One and Two was September twenty-fifth? Should we cite that in?
That would be helpful. September twenty-fifth?
Memo from Transpho, yeah.
Memo from... So, incorporating those, one of those. And then, the fourth change is simply to add the word "planned" to the map title on page fifty-seven that shows, is it...
Might be, if I could, it might be better to reference that as Exhibit A nineteen point five zero point zero-one-zero E.
Yeah.
Okay, say it one more time, exhibit?
The way it's worded here, I would start with nineteen dot five zero dot zero-one-zero E. Exhibit A. Adding the word "planned" to the title.
Okay.
There's more.
Is there?
Yes. One of the first changes is change nineteen forty-two oh-five-oh D three A to refer to the definition of affordable housing in nineteen twelve oh-two-oh. That was the, the one that the Housing Authority pointed out.
That's right. All right, I didn't write that one down, so... Nineteen...
Point four-two.
Forty-two oh-five-oh D three A. To make it consistent... Should we say that, to make it consistent with HUD definitions of affordable housing?
I would say to refer to the definition of affordable housing in AMC nineteen point twelve.
That's the GMA definition?
Yeah, but if we ever change it again, now we just have, we're just referencing our definition. And I don't know if there's any other reference, I don't know if there's any other references to affordable housing in the, in this section that might need to be updated, so maybe throw in, and, and any other references that need updating.
Okay. Okay. Yikes.
The ADU impact fees was a finding rather than a change. Do we need to do that as a separate?
No, we've, we're, we're just writing that, we're keeping tabs of that being a finding in your, in your recommendations, that's all.
Okay.
The way, the way I'm going to word it is, the Planning Commission finding to ask Council to explore impact fees for ADUs.
All right.
I, sorry.
Go ahead.
Were you, were you, did you have more?
No.
I do.
Okay. Okay.
You're doing double duty tonight, you're doing the recording secretary and the chairman.
Hey, I'm trying to write this down so that I can repeat it after you make a motion.
I appreciate that you're writing it down.
You can just say, "And all the changes on this piece of paper that I'm going to hand to..."
The, so, one of the ones that Commissioner Mills brought up in the Procedures table with regard to the reference to Planning Commission in the Type Four column.
And I think we can just, the way I interpret that is, where it says Planning Commission there, right by Libby's cursor, would, so that's referring to a recommendation. So, there would be a recommendation from nobody, it's just the City Council hearing it and making a decision. So, there is no recommendation, it would say "none," just like it does in the previous rows, you know, to the left of that.
And then, this would change to, yes, before City Council? The next, the one that says, "Yes, before Planning Commission," for pre-decision hearing?
Correct. Pre-decision, open-record, public hearing would be, say, "Yes, before City Council," instead of "Yes, before Planning Commission." And then, the next one down, closed-record, decision hearing, would just be "no."
Bless you.
All right, and what is this chart called? Nineteen point two-oh point oh-three-nine? Can you scroll?
Oh, sorry.
Nineteen point two-oh point oh-three-oh dash one.
One. We can just say, "Three changes." Good enough?
Yeah.
Discuss, yeah.
We have, no, it's, so, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, one final one, in staff's, this memo that's in your packet, did you also want to incorporate in your recommendation, all of staff's recommendations that we went over in the beginning of the meeting?
I think that's...
Did you say that?
It's in the draft motion?
Oh, good, oh, that was good.
I think what we have is, we've got a two-piece motion here. We've got basically alternate, the alternate motion that staff provided, with the exceptions as hopefully the chairman has documented.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for reminding me of that, I forgot.
Go to page two of twenty-seven of the staff memo.
Two, three, four, five, six. I'm counting six changes.
In the staff memo?
No, no.
That we just came up with?
You were looking for the, you were looking for the draft motion?
Yeah.
The draft motion is on page two of twenty-seven of the staff memo.
Okay.
You were just on it.
Yeah.
There you go.
Great. That was all I had, thank you.
All right. This is the big move, everybody. Who wants to make a motion?
Looks like Libby has something to say.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Proceed.
Good, good, the, so, the motion also includes amendments to the official zoning map. Excellent, whoever wrote this memo did a great job.
Chairman Martin, I don't know if I can speak for the other two Commissioners present, but speaking for myself, I wouldn't have a prayer in making that motion with the details. I'm hoping that you were writing...
Well, they agree, they, they agreed, you could just say "as," as we, as just discussed.
Okay.
I, I believe was the, yeah, so, unless you want to reread them, you can, but...
I'm going to reread them.
Okay.
After you make the motion.
Okay. Let me take a shot at that, then.
Okay.
Chairman Martin, I move to recommend that the City Council adopt the proposed development regulation amendments and official zoning map amendments with the additional staff-recommended statements shown in the tables below, as well as the amendments identified by the Planning Commission tonight, including...
Including six, I'm calling them six changes, and I'm going to list them.
I, I accept those modifications. Or amendments to my motion, I should say.
Well, it's not really amendment, but is there, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommend that the City Council adopt the proposed development regulation amendments and official zoning map amendments with the additional staff-recommended amendments shown in the tables below, as well as the amendments identified by the Planning Commission tonight, including the density map nineteen point four-two point zero-two-zero. I just wrote the words "remove the or." So, do we want to say that in a better way? We can.
1942 0...
1942 02. The density chart, actually. For lot sizes, for duplex, minimum square feet. And I...
Removing the smaller duplex option following the or.
Correct.
From each column.
For each of the columns.
Well, it's actually for R2A, R3, and...
Any, any column in which it appears.
No, because you were okay with the R2.
That's true. Okay. Now, that's one change. Second change, for there to be a review and revision of the Collector, Active Transportation Secondary Network Collector Exception for J Avenue between 22nd Street and 29th Street to be in line with either option one or option two demonstrated in a memo from Transpo on September, I think you said 25th, 2025, as decided by the Public Works Director. That's number two. Number three, that the map, 19 dot 50 dot 010E, Exhibit A map, add the word planned to the title. Number four, let's see, retain the single-family, small lot permitted in Old Town, 19 dot 41 dot 040, in the draft memo and the associated changes in Form and Intensity Standards. That's number four. Number five, in 19 dot 42 dot 050D dot 3A, to refer to AMC 19 dot 12 definition of affordable housing and any related references needing to be revised. And the last one, to make the discussed changes to 19 dot 20 dot 030 dot 1, there were three changes there relating to, not permission, help me out, related to authority to make, for decision-making and appeals.
Three changes.
Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Watson, I think we need a roll call motion for this.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Snowman?
Yes.
Motion passes. And, good job, everybody. That was a lot. Now we're on item six, other business, and there's nothing there. So we're on item seven, Planning Department update.
So it's really late, so I'll spare you any, any discussion of Planning Department updates. Nothing, nothing has passed through City Council from Planning Commission yet. We did bring, we did deliver the Planning Commission's recommended comprehensive plan amendments to the City Council for them to start considering, so they've got time, we brought it to them Monday. So now they have the ability to, you know, read the 627-page recommendation that the Planning Commission delivered to them. And will deliberate on it once they get, once this makes it to them. This referring to the development regulations.
And is there anything else for the good of the order?
We're back on our regular scheduled Planning Commission meetings.
So the next Planning Commission meeting would be the second week of November?
Oh, I don't have it here. I don't know.
Okay, we'll, we'll send out the invitation for the next Planning Commission meeting. No further business.
The next scheduled one is, is November 12th, and right now we don't have anything for that agenda.
Okay.
Oh, and we can pretty much just anticipate canceling that, the 26th, which is Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So we will, unless something, no, we'll commit to just not having that meeting.
So it might be a month before we see each other's lovely faces.
You know, I, I, I'm sorry to say this, but I think that there will need to be a meeting on the 12th because we have a shoreline permit for you to review.
Okay. Okay, next meeting, November 12th. No further business, 9:17, we are adjourned.